Like the mayor, when you first see him, he looks like your uncle cheating at cards, right? And he's not, he's not, he's not, he's not like the lying to you, I mean? So you're not gonna check him? He has a gun. She has a gun.
We're here for Patrick O'Grady's getting a gun. Yeah, the community recognition award. Yeah. Just giving you a hard time for putting.
You're gonna let him in with a gun? You let them both have guns and bring the gun. Mr. Mayor, was that you? You don't have your Mercedes today?
Uh, yeah, I'm throwing a monkey wrench in this morning.
That's why I wanna be like him. See him too? He doesn't get to have a gun. All these other people coming in right through with a gun, half of them. And how do you guys know? He looks like I would let him have one. And the other people, I wouldn't.
Coach, they uh, thirteen, fourteen, they're so.
They don't, they let everyone else through. Or some people, but you don't have the privilege to. Oh wait, you are going. It's you, man. I want you. That's like hard on you, man. I mean, that's hard. That hits you hard, you know what I mean?
What's that?
Like find out that guy's a scumbag. He's a dirty city manager. What are you doing, man?
I'd walk behind you.
So you guys say stuff like that. You're so fond of them. The whole place you're sitting at is a place of suspicion. You're supposed to be checking people. Oh no, you gotta walk circles around me.
I'll see if he'll keep house.
Alright, I'll sit in your chair, man. If you're gonna fuck around, man. I just sit here. This guy's like fucking, so what's wrong with you, man?
I've just, I've never had that to help with though.
That's right. That's right. So why, why do you think this is okay? Why do you think it's okay to fucking lie? Violate your oath? What? You think it's okay? What is it? It's stupid too, man. You know that sergeant that's here? Has he gone, has he gone back to Massachusetts? Oh, this dude, man, you should've seen that. Look, man, the guy had his little... Ooh, man, yeah, that's right. He went back to Massachusetts.
Who's from Massachusetts?
What's he doing in Massachusetts? What do you think he's gonna do? Going to Lawrence? You know where I'm from? I'm from Massachusetts. I'm from Boston.
We got a lot of Boston guys here. Like twelve or thirteen Boston guys, ex-Bostoners.
Yeah, and you know... So you thought it was okay, let him in, right?
What's that?
Maybe you let, thought it was okay, let him in. You messed up with that.
Did you see the jersey short? This guy was on it.
Wait, say it again.
That's a nice car.
Not as nice as the other one.
Well, it's pretty nice.
That's not a Mercedes, that's just.
It's a BMW.
Oh my god.
Well, it's still a nice car.
He's the only one, like, he has a Mark of Kane. Oh my lord, but my punishment.
Somebody's got two.
Oh my lord, but my punishment is too much to bear. Like, um... Right? Jesus Christ. I guess I'm going. I got a tripod. How's he gonna deal with these two police?
You got your little shoes?
You got all your stuff?
Like, yes.
What about all those bags back there?
What, I don't need a bag. I got my, I got my stuff.
You got your essential equipment?
Yeah, I think so. What? I got them. All my camping equipment. Cause it's gonna be a cold night. It's gonna get down to forty-nine degrees. Okay. Wait, let me go first. Um, I got my... It's gonna go down to, maybe it might go down to forty-nine. Um, like the coldest ever. This is the night. Put it on. Guess I have my camping equipment. Or like, you know, stops I could just... I like to do it on principle. If I got stuck. Probably is, right? Like, uh... Man, man, everything's fucking here. Look at this shit, man. I was gonna say, I got a... I was camping back in nineteen eighty-six. In Homestead, Florida. When the space shuttle blew up. And I had, I was sleeping with my... With my legs in a garbage bag. Makes you warm too. And it got down... Might've got down to... Got Homestead. It probably got, it might've got down to like thirty-six or something. There, it didn't freeze or froze the other parts. And of course, the space shuttle too. The, um, stuff was falling. The cold. From the, um... The cold air was falling onto the O-rings. From the oxygen boil off. Or the hydrogen boil off. Oh, you know, like that, and then it gets cold. You know, or, or just cold air. Maybe it's like actually oxygen. Boils, it falls. They let that boil off on the outside probably. Then you hear, so again... They got some busy stuff here today. Maybe we should do that now. Maybe it's not big yet, alright? I'm gonna put in earplugs. If they start talking to me, I wanna put in earplugs. I'm gonna go from here on in there this time. I'm gonna go in there. Someone's coming though. Like these police, they don't even let them in. They don't let them in. They don't let them know what's going on. They don't go in there. They're not allowed to. That'd be cool, right? That'd be cool for beginning of the video, right? To deal with, oh, there he is. Oh wow, what happened to everyone else?
What's that?
What happened to everyone?
What are you looking for?
Like all the usuals. The usual cops that are here every single time.
Who's that?
Officer Bush, I think. Well, is it not usually? And then, um, also whatever.
We got how?
You know, I don't know everyone's name.
So I think these details have been switched.
No, hasn't for a while, hasn't for a while.
Yeah, it depends on who signs up to work the detail, so it's always different officers.
Uh, it's always the same one, man. They only let certain ones in. They won't let you guys know what's going on. Yeah, cause you don't know. They don't know anything. You probably don't know anything either. You don't know.
About what?
Anything, you don't know anything. You don't know any sneaky secrets.
No, I don't like secrets.
Yeah, that's what I mean. But you don't. This dude down here, huh? I was at Old Chester Street yesterday. Over the Chester Street. Ever went down to Chester Street?
Yeah.
You do? The intersection, you do? Chester Street and Lafayette? Yeah, did you go there?
I used to. Haven't been there in a while.
How long's that been?
Oh geez, since I got put in the hurt.
Okay. Yeah, wow. God, I was all prepared. I got my toothbrush in my pocket. I don't want, I'm putting their hands on it and stuff. You know, you gotta go through my. Oh yeah, yeah, you guys are cool. I was like all psyched up for it though. You guys are just regular cops.
Sorry to let you down.
No, it's okay. It's okay. It's so funny. That's interesting.
Hello? Sid?
Sid?
Yeah. I'm just saying, I'm really sick with Trump.
It's so cool. So usually I think I miss something. Oh wait, which one's there? Oh, they showed it there. Oh man, there's no one here. Wonder where everyone is though. I have a question, like just an idea. So the parking lots are full of cars, right? You got, that's a lot of people out there. And then the employee parking's full, and then... You know, and then over there where City Council parking is, but there's no one in there. So where is everyone?
Guess they need offices?
Huh?
An office is working?
Okay, I guess everyone's sitting in the car too. I usually don't come this early.
Yeah, there's all kinds of offices back there where people work at.
Yeah, but, okay. You should come a little later. So what's this guy? So what are you with? What are you?
I'm just waiting on the City Council meeting to start.
So what's your role here?
I'm just a citizen.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Like what? You're gonna talk or something?
No, just... Gonna watch the council meeting.
Wait, South, what's that, waste?
Yeah, Southwest Waste.
Oh, you're the garbage guy or something? Oh, that's good. You're the...
Not the, not the, not the people that.
It says in New Jersey, you're the good one. Good guys, you know? Seriously.
Well, the ones that aren't picking up the garbage, we're not that.
You guys, oh, okay.
We're not that waste pro.
Do you do work in the summer, in August, outdoors?
Sure.
You still work in August, outdoors?
Oh yeah.
God, yeah, that's intense.
Florida, it's hot.
Well, yeah, you know, yeah. Yeah, you get really strong.
Yeah, seems like it gets hotter every year though.
Yeah.
I think it's just cause we get older.
I miss it though. I like, I mean, I always like wanna see, have it come again, the August.
Where you work, do you live here?
Yeah, I do now. I was in Boston.
Oh, okay.
But now I'm down here.
What part of Beantown were you in?
Um, in Dorchester. I was in the valley. I used to, Marty Walsh grew up a block and a half away from me, just around the corner.
Yeah.
Mayor Menino's daughter, it's there. It's that whole family. Like the whole thing, man. That playground where Marty Walsh used to, um... Go to, my daughter would go to that. I know all this stuff. Integrately and how it works, what happened. You know, why.
So what, what are you doing with the camera?
Oh, I film these guys. It's all mafia and stuff. Here, I get the thing of Patty Cummings, the frame true. Like, um... Um, you can look at my YouTube channel, LosifCrum, L-O-S-I-F-C-R-U-M-B. Cause Google doesn't, um... Google doesn't do our information. I think I'm getting it. I think I'm figuring it out too.
What is it? What is it now?
I'm, oh, Losif, L-O-S-I-F-Crum, C-R-U-M-B. And you'll see, yeah, cause I started in Boston, then I came down here. I was gonna sort of make the layoff, but then... I got, um, I didn't just start doing police stuff down here. I kinda got dragged into it.
Oh, you're, so you do, you like a...
Yeah.
A second amendment guy or?
Yeah, kind of. It started, ended up that way. It wasn't originally. I wanted to protest something about, um... About, uh, it was like, um, Boston police, um... There's like sexual abuse issues.
Yeah.
And they're grooming, grooming kids. It's all the way back too. The one guy they arrested, he was put in prison for life. I didn't even know it was gonna be that, um... But, um, they systematically rape and abuse. It's like that Jeffrey Epstein stuff, but it goes on. Children's Hospital is like dirty, and you wouldn't imagine. It doesn't seem like the world would work that way. A guy systematically, the guys doing it. They pay them off. There's some weird stuff, which I think you don't get down in Southwest Florida. So I think, um... You know, it's a different, is it?
So what's your, what's your, what's your cause down here?
But you can see, you gotta, it's like, I don't usually explain it and stop writing. But, um, I guess it's a police report.
Police actives?
Yeah, okay, so well, everything, the truth, the truth, okay, so you know the protest, the Palestine protest, right?
Yeah.
That they just had.
No, I don't know about it here.
That's all police. That's all police. I got it documented. That's it. Um, slam dunk, I made videos, like, you know, the police person leading it. Um, you know, when you go up there, you go to the parking lots and especially you go... You know, maybe out a little bit, out, um, I was at the Beals, the Beals, like Wyver's for Beals. It's all prostitution. So they actually be doing it in the back there, and all kinds of stuff. And you see the guys guarding it. It's a complicated thing.
Yeah.
Um, and, and maybe you know about that or something like that, and then... And everything is basically, every... Every, this is like, um, there's no homeless people, okay? Like, it'll sound crazy, but the guys with the bikes, that's usually cops, um, and stuff. And people touch their nose, do nose signals, maybe, maybe even know what they tell you or something. Wink News is all fake. They'll bring in background actors, and I documented enough so I could, um... You'll know, like, if you watch my stuff, it'll be like, oh yeah, I know.
I'm gonna be checking this out, cause yeah, I think there's a, there's a big cabal in this country.
And it's a specific thing, and it's always like people talk about money, but there's a specific thing. It's like here, it's like the, you know, they have prostitution in all the parking lots out there, um... You know, and the guy even has to help, like, you shouldn't just hug him, cause it's like, he seemed like a brother or something like that. They should might be in there. And he's, they, they have that. It's not like one organization. It shouldn't go in and be okay. Usually, you know, it'll be the guy in the parking lot around, and he'll do guard duty and do different stuff. So it integrates like that, but it's not like just, um, one system. It's all run by the sheriff's department.
So you think the cops are in on it?
Oh yeah, sheriff's department. That's all sheriff's department. And, um, and even when you see, like, you get the guys, the homeless guys that drive around on a plain old land road, that'd be like the police. Probably sheriff's department. I'm kinda guessing.
And what are they doing trying to?
Actually, if you watch my video, you'll laugh. I'll see the undercover, cause I started doing undercover from Boston.
Yeah.
Um, so what they do, so what ends up being, why would they let it go? Cause it's, it's, there's a certain amount of money, that's not like the big, like, it's... They got all that, so they have all their, their actor people. A lot of people up in the comments are doing the same thing. And I think I caught them, um, like the certain, probably the county sheriff deputy. Um, and then, and then certain people involved with sex trafficking, I guess it kind of looks up, cause I hear they have wife swapping things or clubbing and stuff. Cop that used to be here was telling all kinds of stuff. Kinda messing with Officer Bush, if you hear it.
Yeah, I see this. The guy with the beard, right?
No, 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 the guy, the white guy. I think he went back, the sergeant, he went back up to me. That's Jesus, man. Um... But they use that to like kinda run stuff. So they have fake thing of face. It's all Alex Jones later. It's like, but it's real, you know? And it's like, it depends on me. You watch, if you watch my videos, I put hours, hours, and I put timestamps. So you can do any body cam. I just did something that a cop has body cam. Got something turned on yesterday. So you can FOIA that and verify everything I do, second by second. If you have any of your own metadata down the street, you'll see the car that drove by, like, you know, so you know I'm legit, right? And I don't, um... And, uh... And, um, yeah, so that's what it is. And Patty Cummings, you know, that, you know, if you look at the old city council, when you get really used to it, and, and it gets really... I have a certain method where I turn off the sound, maybe put music or something second listen, cause it gets really annoying. And then people, all the talking is the line, usually. And you just never get around to it, or like, like the mayor, when you first see him, he looks like your uncle cheating at cards, right? And he's not, he's not, he's not, he's not like the lying to you, I mean? And then, but if you're there for a while, it's like you're in a thing and you think something else.
So what do you do, come in, what do you do at these meetings?
Oh, I film it and stuff. I put a lot of stuff, like, you know.
Now, are you the one, I was here, I don't know, two or three meetings ago, and they asked him gotta leave because they had.
No, 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 that was fake too. You know, that guy came from JCPark. Like, when they, okay, when that happened, you know how they didn't have any break? They're in a meeting? Well, you know when they, okay, when the morning meeting, they asked him to, he, he got kicked out once, right? And then a week later, they had the afternoon. And so he had to leave, right? No, the news, the, the press was here, right? Um, so I was out here filming, so he came out here. And you notice how they had no break?
Why did they have to leave? Why did he have to leave?
Um, that was fake, that was fake. And the mayor, and you can watch, you've watched those videos enough, and the mayor also told his other lady, threatened to have her leave once. And if you watch the comment section, you can see their acting and stuff.
Yeah.
Like that. Um, but that guy was, um, that guy was fake. And, um... And so I would be out here talking to them, but you were at that meeting, right?
Yeah, not the one where, well, was that the one where they asked the meeting before the meeting? They, the cops came in and talked all handily.
Yeah, that afternoon, right? Now, were you here for that? You just sat in the meeting?
Yes.
You notice how there was no break? They usually have a break, right? You notice how it went through, like, was it like two and a half hours? There was no break? They never do that, right?
I don't stay for the whole thing usually.
Oh, okay, okay. They didn't have a break. They don't have a break. You look at it, cause I was out here with him. And the cops was playing around with him. Um, so they stopped the interview, Wink News. I just tore the whole thing up. You look at my thing. And I put it in the, you're asking me. Then you'll, you'll figure it out. Like, cause that, that was fake. And now he's at JCPark. Cause my theory is they got him, they got him on the hook for something. These guys find everything. You can't do anything. You go in your car anywhere, they'll, maybe not, they're just finding it out, but they'll metadata it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You can't have an affair on your wife, anything. They will, they will metadata it back, track, you know? And if they have to, they'll subscribe to whatever, to the thing to know where your car goes. It doesn't matter. The more weird your license plate is, darkening out, that's like, Florida is still Florida. Like, you know, you used to have to say what county you're in and all that. That's, they're still doing that, but it's just... The, the cameras, all this stuff is so good. They'll just see the car. The more your license plate's screwed with, the more the computer just thinks that way. It doesn't use the license plate. So they, everything is tracked, you know? And they, and they, and they, um, so they got the prostitution thing. Um, tab that, this thing of all the undercover, all the, um, actors, and then they blackmail people. Like, um... You know, the city council? Or that psych blackmail. Um, and you see, you see, scared, and some, some of the comments and stuff, like, actually say something, but not really say directly. You know, stuff like that, so... Cause they'll know. And yeah, they're, they're coworkers. All their pizza stuff, Big John Pizza. And you drove around, all around and around, Big John's parked a lot. And you're around, you know, and I don't know, like, the hurricane, you gotta think of your family. And your, your, you know, your family was, you know, like, it's like, I, you know, I put, I said, mayor's cruel co-talkers. And it's the other ones.
So do they, do they give you grief for being in the meetings?
No, no, actually, that's one of the crazy things. It's like welcomed in.
Yeah, well, they can't stop.
Um, they wanted me filmed. They wanted it, and, um... It's crazy land here. This is like, um... You know, cause if everything's fucked up, I'm just part of the thing. They're just, um, they're just using me too, you know, like, um... They threw their undercover, like, one, one cop, I think, I think the guy's a cop, like sheriff's deputy or something, the one that used to do the commenting, I just hit, hit that, that pierce ear with a big round thing in it.
Oh yeah.
Now, and that's supposed to be on purpose for annoy, I think he, I think, well, that's, I think it's a police disguise. I think he just go ahead and put a whole fake ear on it. Like, that's his thing for his police disguise. And, um, and so I think they did, I think it was the same one I saw at Goodwill. You'll have to see when the, look at my Goodwill video a little bit back, cause I haven't spent the time to really compare side by side, um... Um, I think that's the same one, and they purposely just threw him right in front of me. I was in Goodwill's over at, um, over at, in Fort Myers. And figuring it was all prostitution. You know, and people going in, nice Goodwill ladies, everything. And they threw everything at me. But, but, it's like funny for them and stuff. It's like crazy. But it's like frustrating, cause Patty Cummings, um, I got you, I looked at the old, um, city council meetings and it's back at, um... Before she even knew she was in a wrong problem. So she, you know, the election's in twenty twenty-two, so back in like February twenty twenty-two, they had a, um, item agenda or something, the mayor brought up, like, let's talk about having to live in your district and all that. How's that go? You have to live in your district? They actually did that right back then. They're all talking about it, you get to see them, and like, I think it's okay, you know, something. And, oh yeah, and, oh, you know, and they're all faking it and, and stuff like that. So they all, they all know. And then Jessica Cousins, I know, was like, Patty, who ran against her once. Patty Cummings, oh, terrorist, and this and that. And so, and she's slick though, you'd never tell from her from that. But, uh... And, um, so they're nailed. They know they're gonna get if not live in your district. And I did this thing, like, you know? I can't even get a comment. I thought I got her off hook totally. Cause, um, cause they say, they're setting her up so they could have an October surprise. You know, right? Like, she wouldn't be living in her house properly. And now, then the hurricane came and stopped all that, so she got elected. And so they activated the thing and got her out, and it might even be they didn't know why or something. Um, but that's what happened. Um, so, it's a weird case, cause she's living in a house she wasn't living, supposed to be the one she's supposed to be living in, that stayed vacant, so she's charged with felony. It's a weird situation, but it, it's these guys that got her, got her that house somehow. And you got, the people that own the house, these two old people that are, um... Cheating on their thing, um, in order for her to live there. So they gotta be quiet in a certain way, cause they, they're taking, they take a tax deduction for Homestead deduction, but you gotta live in a house. And so they're on the hook. They all like, like, it's someone else Patty Cummings thing. Yeah, Patty Cummings, what was she supposed to be? The real master criminal? Like, hey, I don't know, dude. I'll go have, rent yet another house, cause I can do everything, right? And I'm never gonna go there. I'm not gonna be, come, drive by there, like, I ain't living two houses, I don't care, you know? Like, it's just like, I'm gonna never go there, and really they're playing there, they're probably playing, they're like, I'm gonna spray the rug, spray it again, you know, do the, you know, pull up, I gotta do the tiles first. Don't, don't put your stuff in there. Probably don't even want to have a futon on the floor there. You know, the whole, and she's all infiltrated, probably all her friends. Those people that came, um... God, man. When they voted to send her stuff up to state, I was here for that meeting. And, uh, I didn't know, I thought maybe she was... Like, um, her, these people that are supposed to be with her, like, um, had a death threat, they said. And so Patty Cummings is on a tear, going around, piece of paper. This guy right here. This guy, and you can just tell, man. See a guy in it with a blue shirt, that's... He throw you four, cause he's happy. They just get you in the hook, get you out of. See, they do the thing with, um, contractors. Right? And it's not like a secretary. So, it's like... I guess it's like that, right? Is that close? Yeah, if you watch the video, it's like, um, so I'm not used to really laying out a theory. I just watch it, man. I watch hours. And everything, they all the union here. Too, and that's all, these guys will all run undercover, do, do their little helping acting for the police. And all the guys are the big guys, so it looks like they must be the massage parlor bouncer or something. These union guys. The painter's an ally craftsman. But yeah, you just watch, you watch all this stuff and get to the backgrounds, and you become, cause you gotta really watch hours. And when I'm talking, it doesn't do justice if I say, I'm like Alex Jones. It's this, it's this, it's that. Really, you need to, you know, you need to see the world I'm seeing, you know, you need to look out the window with me.
Yeah.
Right? You know what I mean? Cause otherwise, it's like, I don't, and it get all weird about seeing it, and it's cuckooing.
Wow, it's just something that's shitty.
When you look out, you gotta go see.
You can't imagine the, 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 yeah, how it's all in your heart.
Yeah.
But it's all for us.
And it's, and it's, well, and also, but that, it's a specific thing, so... It's like, cause you're thinking, oh my god, I gotta be careful, but they're specific, so certain things, certain tracks you can go.
Yeah.
And it's...
And other ones you can't.
Yeah. There we go, look at those guys. Cool. Those guys. Oh, he went through, man. Oh, he was there, man. Wait. Oh, you guys do that too?
What's that?
She's got a gun.
She's got a gun?
Right, yeah, sure.
Don't arrest me.
Yeah? At least other guys do. It's not against the law. It's not actually against the law, I think. She got a gun, hey, man. Yeah, she's got it there. Ah, there we go. See, I'll let the people through the metal detectors with, um, with it going off and don't check them and stuff. Only saw the one. Is that, is that what you guys are gonna do?
What's that?
Are you guys gonna let people through, like, the metal detector or not check them? When it goes off? What? Like the other guys do that. Like they have certain ones that are that true. But is that what you guys are gonna do? Or?
How many kids you got?
What? Oh, you're not saying? Oh, you're not talking about her, right? There's gotta be someone else. So you're not gonna check if he has a gun?
That's not it.
What?
I'll shoot you, it's not good.
See, they have two. He just lets that guy in with a gun?
Good, hello. Any sort of question like that? Do you need a box or something?
No, I don't even have.
Keeps it? Yeah, whatever it is.
She has a gun.
We're here for Patrick. Oh, great, he's getting a gun.
Yeah.
Yeah, the community recognition award. I'm just giving you a hard time for a pleasant.
You wanna let him in with a gun? You let them both have guns and bring the gun in.
Thank you.
So what is your problem? Why do you do that? Why is it you go all through my bag and stuff? Not you two. What?
You go through everybody's bag.
No, you don't. You don't let them in. You just let two, all these people who want a gun. It's on video. You don't even check them. What? Man, you fly, man. So what's up with that?
Run, run. I've been a female until you go before.
I haven't worked there in three years. I used to work all the time. Maybe not.
You have?
I'm working in these places.
Yeah. I'm pretty, I'm here to here, so we have a gun.
So why doesn't, why doesn't he get to bring a gun into the meeting? You let everyone else in. You could have your gun in, they, if you're like, have the privilege. They let you right in. Now, he's supposed to, right? He doesn't need one. He has a, he has a Mercedes. Mr. Mayor, was that you? You don't have your Mercedes today?
Uh, yeah, I'm driving a monkey right in the morning.
Okay. That's why, I wanna be like him.
I wanna be like him. Like his outfit. I'm the awesome mayor.
Why is he, um? So what is it? Do you guys have a list of who you let in with a gun and then the other? And it's like, how do you do that? How do you guys figure that out? How do you guys figure out who gets to get in? Like what? I don't wanna say it. Like, what's your, all, your name and badge number, you two?
Officer House, badge number two years early.
You, what, you know what was your name again?
House.
House, okay. What's, what's you? What are you? Uh, what's your name again? Mar- Marcinho? Ma- Messino? I'm losing it, man. Okay. It's an echo in here, man. See him too. He doesn't get to have a gun. All these other people coming in right through with a gun, half of them. And how do you guys know? He looked like I would let him have one. And the other people, I wouldn't, you know? Seriously, man. Or unless I'm hokey, um. So how do you guys figure that out?
Oh, I figured one out.
Who gets to get in with a gun?
The gun?
Yes, who you let in with a gun?
Just us.
Well, who you let get through the metal detector? And not check them? How do you figure that out?
Enjoy it.
What?
I've been trying. I'm trying to.
I don't wanna say it.
He's doing good. He's doing good. Coached a, uh, thirteen, fourteen.
They don't, they let everyone else through. Or some people, but you don't have the privilege to. Oh, wait, you are going.
Uh, he just turned fourteen.
You are gonna.
But I need to get.
So what's this guy's, right?
Where's he, where's he?
They're, they got to do the, the.
Got to hear it.
I love it.
A good program.
Yeah.
Take care, buddy.
You too, man. Good to see you.
I would see you.
Baseball talk. Baseball talk. What, what, uh, program? Uh, coaching South Union. I coached there for probably eight years. My boys are thirty-five and thirty-two now. O'Connor. Bobby O'Connor, Brian O'Connor. I played there myself. First year to open up there. Oh, okay. And I coached there also. Yes, so, um, Bruce, uh, Solich was there, Tim, Tim Hart, yeah. Jim, um. His wife just walked out. Oh, did she? Yeah, she just walked out. She's still working at the city? Yeah, yeah. Gina. Rest, rest in peace. Gina. Yeah, that was, that, I did not see that one happening. Of course, Tim passed away, several, eight years ago. Yeah, what's his? Yeah, and he was not the best of times. But what's your name? Um, I see them, Adam. Adam, Bob O'Connor. Nice to meet you as well.
Great, I think I found what I had my.
Oh, good deal, man.
Oh, this guy.
So you post all this? We're, we're right front of my.
Yeah, yeah, hold on, let me do a quick. Yeah, yeah, let's, I'll tell you something. That's you, man. That's you, man. I want you, you, I want you. That dude.
What's that?
That dude. City manager, he's dirty. Figure that out. That's like hard on him, man. I mean, that's hard. That hits you hard, you know what I mean?
What's that?
They can find out that guy's a scumbag. He's a dirty city manager.
You don't like a city manager?
Huh? No, I mean, that's, it's what he does.
Very fond of our city manager. In all regards. Thank you. Are you doing the pledge? No. Nope, they're just, uh, stuck with me. Oh. I'm good, guys.
Oh my God, man. So you're so fond of them, right?
What's that?
What, you're so fond of them. You're talking like that. And here you are with a metal detector. What are you doing, man?
I'd walk behind you.
So you guys say stuff like that. You're so fond of them. The whole place you're sitting at is a place of suspicion. You're supposed to be checking people. You know, we act like it's unethical to, to have, to not just say everyone's crazy. This guy, that guy's dirty.
I'm just curious, I'm a strategist, man. I don't know why. Just lie.
So you've been letting people through with a gun? So what do you do? What, what is the purpose? Like, or, or why do you get to just do this to us? Cause what you're doing is you're letting people through with a gun, but it's supposed to be an unarmed area.
I'm armed.
Yeah, I didn't say that. I said, why are you doing this?
Is that, you should go to law? I think about a couple days ago. Maybe like once a month or so. Uh, been super new balls.
Oh, wait, yes, I got one here.
I'll see how many circles it do.
Oh, no, you gotta walk circles around me.
I'll see if he'll keep house on.
All right, I'll sit in your chair, man. If you're gonna fuck around, man. I just sit here. This guy's like fucking, so what's wrong with you, man?
I just, I've never had that to help with, uh, with you guys.
That's right. That's right. So what, what, what do you think this is okay? Why do you think it's okay to fucking lie, violate your oath? What? You think it's okay? What is it? It's stupid too, man. Do you know that sergeant that's here? Is he go, is he going back to Massachusetts? Oh, this dude, man. You should have seen that. Look, man, the guy had his little, ooh, man, yeah, that's right. He went back to Massachusetts.
Who's from Massachusetts?
What's he doing in Massachusetts? What do you think he's gonna do? Going to Lawrence? You know where I'm from? I'm from Massachusetts. He's from Boston.
We got a lot of Boston guys here. Like twelve or thirteen Boston cops, ex, ex-Bostoners.
Yeah, and you know, so you thought it was okay, you let him in, right?
What's that?
Maybe that thought it was okay, you let him in. You messed up with that.
Did you see the jersey short? This guy was on it.
No. Hey, you, have you seen Boston's finest?
No, I haven't. What were you on that?
No, but I worked with it. I'm right in that neighborhood, the cop that, well, he didn't kill him, so.
I just started watching a rookie on, uh,
Yeah, there go that.
Five seasons with LAPD, he's pretty good, actually.
Oh, man, yeah. So what's up? Did he go, he went back up there?
Who?
The dude, whatever his name is. I don't really get in people's business. Don't keep asking their name. I, I don't remember his name. You know the one.
We have a lot of.
The one with narcissistic personality disorder that just, um, has, um, he's always, he's really cool. He doesn't care. You, you, you know.
He works for us?
It's, yeah, yeah, sergeant.
Sergeant?
What's his name? The one that was almost here.
Is he bald?
White guy. I don't know. I seriously don't know.
Sergeant Madden?
This guy's good. If, you make people feel like they owe you some math homework. That's why.
That's actually pretty funny.
I know. See, that's the one dude, because if he told me something, it, it, you know, it could be, you just, you know, I don't know the budget, you know? Like, except in this, no one's ever like, everyone's fine here, right? Everyone, no one, no police. Everyone's like, fine here. He's fine because they don't make it home. It's so stupid. Cause they wanna save these jobs in the world. It's the safest job in the world. Like if someone, you get in a fight with someone, everyone's like, gonna act like, you all get to do is say something and everyone's gonna act like it's true. Like, and if, you know what I mean? If I gotta fight, be, be like, I wouldn't know if they're gonna think it's, fucking, they're gonna, well, they'll lie and say it's not true. It's like I gotta video everything. Come on, man. What is he? Yeah, he's. I think he's back there. There we go.
Oh, yeah, a couple few years. Because, uh, good coach on the set. As soon as my company started coaching now, I think with COVID, now this year, we, we did, yeah, just like, eh, I don't know, but. In high school. Baseball's a sport where you have to miss a few years. Yeah. Play football? Uh, I don't, I don't play football. I only play soccer. I played soccer in my junior year in senior years. Yeah. Being like, for, uh, my baseball base, just try it out and you all made it. Oh, I would have, I, if I could have played every sport, I would have played every sport. Played soccer, my school, like, ten, eleven, twelve. Yeah. Oh, but my, uh, my, my team, this works for county, and you know, most big commanders came and was, I wonder if I would, uh, as a joke. It's my bad, you know, make the, um, soccer. We're now, we're, we're now goalies for the baseball. And I wouldn't say championship, but. Really? All right, yeah, one of the guys that tried out was, came and started bowling. I've always, argument, I've said for years, I'm a baseball player, what many sports? Any sport? Any other sports you know? Uh, what sports do you play? Like, like sports growing up?
No. Like, well, I did baseball as a kid, but that was, like, yeah, just setting me up.
Were you any good?
He was setting me up, man. That was right, the divorce. And then I had Little League and then, then I stopped. Cause I kinda fighting with the coaches, kids, but they, they were actually all cool, but, um, and the guys, they wanted to be nice, make up. It was just a situational thing that they, but I didn't really wanna go there anyway. Cause I didn't have a place to practice. I'd break a window and you have to go out to the thing and you have to practice hitting. And if someone else would get the damn ball, you know, I wasn't at a place. Um, and so I, I couldn't hit the ball. But then my dad got into a thing. Where he, he'd sit up in those bleachers. He's like, watch me strike out. I think he was talking to women up in the bleachers. And that's perfect, right? If your kid's striking out, you'll probably pick up women, right?
What's that?
But if your kid's striking out, it's probably a good conversational thing, right? To get women, right? I was in a. See, I don't blame baseball and sports, cause that was my dad, you know, but I hate it. But that was my dad. I realized that was on purpose. You know who he's like? He's like that sergeant. He has narcissistic personality disorder.
Who?
Um, my dad. Just like that sergeant, what's his name?
What's his name? Which sergeant is it?
Dude, I don't even remember. The one, the one that talks to her is Officer Bush, get, get her going. He'll start talking to her and she'll start pole dancing or whatever, you know? Rubbing on stuff. You ever seen Officer Bush get going? What?
Sergeant Madden?
I don't know. I don't know, man, I don't know his name, man, I'm trying outside of it, I try to forget stuff, that's why I got a video. I don't, getting people's business, really. The dude, he's in.
Is he sergeant?
Ooh, is that, um, is that Sizmore down there?
Sizmore's in there.
Wait, it might be him in the parking lot, right? Is that him out there? Is this Sizmore out there? Okay. Yeah, I actually have a, a baby toy binoculars. Oh yeah, that's another guy. Oh yeah, you think so, you think, um, he's really weak, he's just, that's why they got him, I tell them. He's just weak.
Who's weak?
Sizmore. He's like, um, yeah. I know him a lot too, man, I actually figured him out, he's like that, he's probably emotionally like a twelve year old, or something. That's not just an insult, I mean, cause he's not, I don't really blame him. But the dude, um. Are you, do you really study these people, cause like, one of the things is. See, one of the things I do is I watch people with, um, on video, not just my video, but like the YouTube. Cape Coral Police YouTube. Like, like, how would you know, he's, he's so great, but then, if anyone wasn't, like, has anyone ever been not great, or something? All your police and everyone? I don't, I don't know. I think it's more like. Those aren't so fun. They're so funny. Bye, bye. Oh god, this guy, that guy, I want, that guy's going to prison.
He's going to what?
He might go to prison. I just think, that's just, that's only pure. Uh, you know, that's int- that's just not even intuition, it's like kind of a. I don't know. I don't know, but it's the fire department, EMS, you know?
They're heroes, they're the real heroes.
Well, yeah, then, what if it, then you find out it's not, then it's a big fall, right?
I don't know, man.
Well, I don't know, why is it the fire department EMS?
They are.
Why would that be the dirty thing, why would it be him, why would it, why would it be that? In Lee County, it's cause it's not the police, it's the sheriff's department, but there's something. He's, uh, he's like, he, it's, it's fake, okay, they put him in. They, they put him in, they need to fix you, yeah, okay, so I think, um, that's all, that's all, of course, fake, and then. Yeah, yeah, they put him in there, he's a big, he's a joke, he's a guy, obviously, he's all, so mentally ill. Narcissistic personality disorder, probably got, um, you know, I think when he was a kid, probably, it might've been a cop too. Cause he did stuff up in, um, Long Island, or whatever, you know, hung out, you know, you don't even look his, his profile, and I, and then, and then, he oughta be. Of, the coolest thing, that he worked, his dad had a, a tanning spa, and he's like, where's that, he comes from that, those are the coolest people. In the world, you know, you know what I mean, they shouldn't, it shouldn't be mixing with the police stuff, and it's like, it is, but, um. See, they, they put that in, and that's the guy's way up, like, he's, he was friends with him, you know, like, and, and they put that in. Oh, good night. Yeah, that's the neo-liberals, and so, there's nothing they, um, that put him in, of course, and everything's fake here, they're, uh. You know, they can, they can get elected, and you, and you can almost discredit everything, anything happens, it'd be like, all those rednecks, those, those. Confederate, or whatever, you know?
What do you think about his Mercino's Mars bars, have you had one?
His what?
Mercino's Mars bars, you know he has Mercino's ice cream, right?
He's not doing much on video anymore, I got a bigger YouTube channel than he does.
Have you seen, have you tried his ice cream? It's delicious ice cream.
I feel bad, I cussed him out once, he came down with his helicopter, and he's sort of cussing him out. And he got back during the hurricane time, because of the jail killings, and stuff, but, you know, I know he's just. Like, that's just a placeholder, I think the real dirty stuff is, wait, you know, it's a good old voice, which is some nasty stuff, like. Cause it's kids and stuff, that's how they do it here.
That's Hollywood.
That's how they do it, yeah. You know that, um, what do you think about that, um, the statue over there?
Which statue?
Of the, in front of the police station. Like, there was never any coffee, no cops have ever been killed, but they have to have that. And that's in your face, and that's even, they probably made him put it there, but then the ones that are, the dude is just with it, and that's just. Harsh shit, and they can always be like, oh man, it's mafia, you can't do anything with anything, right? They're all playing at different angles, man. And that's, um. That's, um, Sizmore's, um, mentor.
Sizmore's the name?
That's Sizmore, you look at Sizmore in some of the old stuff, on the old YouTube, he looks like. For Christmas, he looks like, you know, you know the Grinch who stole Christmas? And you know the dog? Look at it, and think of the gr- the dog, okay? That's Sizmore, he looks like that, in front of the tree, it's like, what, Grinch coming down the, the, fuck. Sorry, coming down the chimney, and you see. And that dude, you see, is the one who held the camera back in the base, cause they say that once. That dude, I, that's what I want, I wanna put him in prison, and I don't have anything, I just have it, I just think, and I know it, I actually know it. I, I mean, I'm sure, but. Cause I found out some connections too, just about. Some moderately, well, it's between moderately confident and highly confident. What, a technical term, but it's unlike that. That's where they have a boss.
Got it?
Yeah, buddy.
Don't look fun?
Yeah. You guys don't normally do this, this detail. That was for Officer Bush, he can see her tonight.
Wait, yeah, oh man. Yeah, I got him, man, so you are with the thing, man, you're so nice, see, I wanna, I'm so wedge, I wanna wedge this stuff, I'm not gonna. I'm closing down the sheriff, that's what I'm doing. Yeah. Yeah, 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 dude, you hang out with Officer Bush? You do, you hang out with Officer Bush, this guy?
No, we just, we think she's a, a good looking lady.
Yeah, I got her, I got her, you ever get her, I got her, so she'll just, she does a fly, you know, when she sees me, I got her, she's. And then she has to go. No, you, you gotta see her, you gotta, you know, get her doing it. No, no, that's, I think, no, that's dirty, no, no, cause like. No, I've had some bad experiences, you have any daughters?
What's that?
You have any daughters?
I have daughters.
Yeah, wait till you go through it, if you go through that. You see that? Like these people, um. They're really bad. Yeah, I used to take girls to the hospital, I used to go to, um. My daughter's friend's line, she had me take them down to Tufts. They have children's emergency room. Instead of children's, you can't go to children's, now they merged, everything in Boston's gone. You know? Couple times, went up to the city council, talked to city council Tito Jackson. And a couple times, and he's like, yeah, it's cool, I brought the girls up there one time. He said, yeah, we're working, and then now he's like. Nothing, he's a black dude too, and he's, um, he's, they gave him a pot shop, I got people. Then we're friends, they got their job at the, um, at the art museum, like this lady, a two hundred thousand dollar job. I got one guy that was a reporter that, they wrote a whole article, spent months on me, he had just gotten out of, um. Boston University, he's just graduated. And then, no, and then, um, now, he's not, he's not gonna go into journalism anymore, that was his only journalism project.
How do you curiosity though, how do you, how do you support your channel?
I don't support it. I just do this. What do I gotta do, man?
So what, what, uh, what Boston copper, what sergeant was, did you figure out the name yet?
What, what, of what?
The one that you said is narcissist.
Oh, the one, your guy, your guy, you know, whatever, look on my YouTube channel. Yeah, uh, looks at Crum, C R U M.
Crum, L O S I F?
Yeah, L O S I F, that's Crum.
That's yours?
And then Crum, C R U N.
L O?
S.
Crum.
Um, L O S, yeah, they don't know, L O S I F first. And space, and Crum, yeah, L O S is Crum on top. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, look up, uh, look up police depravity, it gets Officer Bush going.
You got a lot of videos on here.
Oh hell, man, I was up in Boston doing stuff, and it's insane amount, so look how, look how YouTube surprises me, um. Cause it's for, I don't care, they have the right people watching it.
Or those guys didn't, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's, um, Lee County Sheriff, those guys. And then YouTube just decided last night they're gonna start pumping up the views on that, those guys are Lee County Sheriff, and just about everything with Scotty. They're, they're running the prostitution, but Beatles, I got them, I got them, it's so hilarious too. And then look at what I, what I did just yesterday. You get situation awareness, watching that, I did Chester Street, definitely, right, cause you think, oh, what's going on there, man? What's going on in Chester Street, right? And you got all the characters, you think, ah, they're prostituting, or something, well, you got the thing, and then, okay, you're not seeing the girl, but ain't no Johns, ain't no Johns. Ain't no, ain't no real, uh, like, what, what do you call, I don't like to call it a pimp, because it's like, you know, it's like someone's older brother. It's not necessarily, the pimps aren't necessarily pimp in this country, like, it's like a, you're not really a scumbag, always, you know what I mean? It's not, unless it's brilliant, or something like that, like, in Europe, those guys are like a slur, because I think it's always hooked in with stuff. And it's, it's, sometimes. You know, it's like the guy waiting outside, or something. But, um, they don't have none of that, they don't have none of that down there. At Chester Street, that's the center, and you guys don't even know, what are you doing, and then I do those car, two cops, they're roused, you know, and then the one, I got Officer Chestnut. And he, he's just pretty good, and the other guy's like, ah, man. There's something going on there, man, and, um, so I think the whole neighborhood. I call it, I call it, uh, Lee County Mafia Central Bank. You know, Chester Street, Lee County Mafia Central Bank, something, something like that, right? And you got everyone lining up with the, jumping, always this with tights, and then the way it is, and they're cool, cause it's like, like. They're cool guys, and then, I think that is, I think that might be, and I don't mean just for here, I think for Lee County. And all these guys are parked with the real estate, like, and they all.
No, you're missing, you should be in the videos, talking to us over here, that'd make them better.
Talk too much to the videos. Cause I get information, I figure people out. Look at the face and hands and stuff.
How do you like that Christmas tree, that's good Christmas tree though, right?
Yeah, see, see, like, you know, this is gonna split, my theory is that, except in Boston. It's corrupt, and what I got, what I found out is children's hospitals dirty. Systematically, like, it's mind blowing, like, and how does it stay, and how do they cover it up, it has to stay, what I think, I'm suspecting, which I think it's Harvard University, hold on.
Even a Boston guy, do you like the alligators, or should be reindeers?
Oh, okay, I don't look at that, I'm not looking at that. The thing is, I think, I think it's more.
Did you get the Christmas tree, alligators?
It's sort of way not craft here, it's like a. Southwest Florida, they keep out MI six, and that's what I mean, like, they're, it's, it's not Israel ever, like, that's always MI six, all the way back. You know, they, like, they act like it's them doing it, or something, and you know that, you have like CIA, with, you know, any foreign intelligence is gonna be MI six. But in Boston, when I was up there, and, and still it lingers, you get MI six all up in that place, and you gotta realize. Why, cause you had, uh. You had, uh, in nineteen seventy-nine, they had a, IRA had a big victory, you know, and they, um, they did all those guys.
That's before I was even born.
Yeah, yeah, and so MI six is all over that place, and they infiltrated, they infiltrated everything, man, they infiltrated Harvard, that's why you have, yeah, MI six British intelligence. Yeah, and that's what's different about it, that's why it's locked down, that's why, and I say, hey, there's kids something, you know, there's just nothing, it goes. You know, ended up people getting jobs, and I'm just like a. And that's all the police stuff, I think they killed a prosecutor too, way back, the only one ever got killed, back in ninety-three-ish, or something like that. But that's, but I, that's my theory, it's MI six, you could never clean them out, cause all, I got info, you know, like. Way back in nineteen. Nineteen ninety, they tried to do stuff, but, um, because of South, huh?
Officer Lucas?
I think so, which one is that?
You work just a lot. You can, can I send a Snapchat?
I forget everyone's name, man, I'm supposed to space out.
By asking? Can I send a Snapchat when you say hi?
Which one is, what's he look like?
I'll show you what he looks like, come on.
Yeah, I, I know him, I know him, cause I know him.
I guarantee, he's on your channel.
I'm supposed to space out, I know, I know, but I forget everyone's name. See, I don't, I, I asked you your name once, and I'll never know it again, I'll hang, be hanging out with you. I'm also, I rebel against it, you know? I rebel against like a name, like, if somebody even know, like, I can know you guys, you know what I mean? Oh, yeah, Officer Bush, Officer Bush, check her out, man. She's on there. Man.
Griff's a good dude, you know, he's a pro football player.
Oh, which, who's that?
Griff.
Is that a sheriff?
Lee County Sheriff.
Oh, is he, is he out of the gun range?
Yeah.
Now, he was, he's the one that was in, um.
He was a Dolphin, played for Dolphins.
He was in, he was in Key West, in, um, in the, um, not the native, is it Coast Guard? Or is that the other guy? I think that was the other guy.
Oh, yeah, Lucas.
Yeah, I went to, I did damn my question a little bit. Yeah. Cause I don't know, I think, um. See, see, anyway, I don't think they have, they, they, you know, I think Southwest Florida is clean. You can't.
You recognize him?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's.
It's Lucas.
Yeah, oh, Lucas, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, my narcissist, yeah.
Huh?
Narcistic, yeah.
He is?
Yeah, he's got the same type as my dad, but he, my dad didn't act out.
Can I, can I Snapchat and send you a video to him?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Where is he at, did he go?
Can just me, can you send a video to him? You know that?
Yeah.
Come on. Lucas, what do you think of Officer Lucas?
He's got, um, narcissistic personality disorder, I haven't told him yet. It's the same type that my dad has.
What do you think of?
Um, and I've been, I haven't been able to tell him, cause it's been.
What about Officer Bush?
Um. Yeah, nevermind.
Can we tell her?
Yeah, she's just fake.
She's what?
She's fake.
Fake?
Fake, that's fake, man.
Can I send that to Lucas, do you care?
Yeah, you know, he doesn't care, he does it on purpose, he says.
That's what he says.
What do you think of, when, how long has he been around?
Lucas? Twenty-one years.
Okay.
He's an SRO.
Oh, so, and he was a cop up in Massachusetts?
He's from, from, he's from Boston, right?
Yeah.
But he's, he's just an officer.
Yeah, I was just playing with you, I was like kinda lying, I was kinda, if you said, yeah, confirmed, then I'd get it, but. Now I'm telling the truth, right? You know what I mean? I was trying to get some comfy for information, I don't know if he was. But he's going back up there, right?
Uh, he probably retires.
No, I think he's going to visit this winter. All the feds are all over the place. All over that place down, and, you know, and he's up north, he's up in Lawrence, he says. He is not, but. He must be with some up there. The feds are all over the place, I got him. In one of my videos, now it's confirmed, the Karen Reed case. Now they're saying the feds were all over it. They're acting like they did it started last April, but really. Uh, you know, twenty twenty-three, really, they were starting, like, more like April of twenty twenty-two. Or, or even before, as soon as Berkowitz retires, like, they're, they're, they're starting up in like early March. Or something.
Who was last time up in Boston?
Oh, like, when I moved, you know, a couple of years ago, I think, I was up there, um, let me see.
I like Boston.
Yeah, except I had to deal with the stuff, it's corrupt. It's lockdown, man.
No, do you, is there a way to turn your light off and keep reporting here?
What?
Doesn't it close my eyes? I get migraines.
Oh, is it light? Oh, shit, that's not supposed to, has that been on the whole time?
Yeah.
I'm gonna burn my battery out. Oh, my God, why didn't you tell me this?
I thought you had a purpose.
No, hell no, I'm not doing it. Have I been going around with light, the light, the whole time? Fucking asshole. That was not on purpose.
Alright.
That happened, I was filming with it last night, or something, or. Man, this thing's phones a piece of crap, I got it cause like I get jumped in. Get my phone stolen, so this one's like a hundred fifty dollars, cause I don't wanna lose face. All these guys that come in. And then, but I've been using this phone all the time, and it probably ran down the battery. I can't believe it, I've been going around like that.
Hey, what do you think of this meme?
I guess it's okay.
Pretty ordinary?
I guess so, yeah.
You don't like it, I love it.
No, I'm not into it, I'm not, I'm into it. Oh, Minnesota, where, I, I lived in Minnesota, that was my happy time. I lived in Minnesota, that was my happy time when I was a kid.
Where?
In Minnesota, I was in, um, Minneapolis.
No, my mom's from Hopkins.
And, um, I went to Southwest Free School. I walked around the school barefoot, and I went over to the river, Mississippi, Mississippi River, and I'd.
I used to play in the Mississippi River as a kid.
Yeah, half the day I was been going up and down the bluff.
What city was that? Coon Rapids, you ever been to Coon Rapids?
No.
Have you ever met Sergeant Ian?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't remember the name.
Who's your favorite cop in Cape Coral? You have one?
I don't really know, I don't know, um. Like. Now, I don't believe in, um, it's not, not anything any good, cause it's like you can't tell the truth. Like, and you can't, and it's like you gotta take an oath in your faith, or you don't really discuss it, like, are, what's the oath is, do you violate? Cause I ask you stuff. About truth, something, and, and you don't really have a, um, ethical argument or talking about, you, you have to evade. And so I'm presuming that there's a real. A violation. I guess that you could say the ethics are difficult to follow, or those are imposed, but. Like, I saw stuff happen, and stuff up in Boston with kids, and it's dirty with kids. Once I find that out, and it's dirty with kids and, and cops. And you see the thing happen here. They got molestation here.
What's that?
They got molestation, not just grooming, or they got the fourteen year olds, I'm sure, and they're grooming boys. I think. And you got the, all that prostitution as grooming. Probably grooming elements, I know they do that man-boy stuff. I'm sure, but I don't have proof, but, and then, and then that's how they fit together, that's why you have the prostitution, that's why you have, and Officer.
Do you ever go down Fort Myers stuff down at nighttime?
Huh?
That's some good stuff up there.
Oh, yeah, I gotta, I gotta try, yeah, my phone doesn't film it well, right? But, um. Do you think I found the place though? Cause Fort Myers says you're gonna be the center. Anyone could sneak in, right? But if you do a Chester Street down there. And you got the whole blocks covered, cause you're in the center of stuff. And you got everyone coming in, all those buildings, I think they have a whole complex here, I think that might be the thing, I think I found it, man. And I did those cops, look at the, look at the second one, he's like, when you look at the full video, he's like, I don't, you know? I'm not trying to, but he's, he's shaking, man. I think that's, that's like the counting house and the money dispensary, the thing. They got the thing there, and maybe, and meetings, like, that would be the, call it the central bank, I think I found it. But it's not good, it's like, um, I don't have proof, but I think they're holding it down with man-boy. They got some stuff. I even think that, um, that super sexual theory. Like, suppose about police death. I think it's like in your face, I think it's like, maybe. The dude wanted it, but then others, like, on the outside, they, they use it, cause all they do is use blackmail. This guy, this guy. It's hard to say shit. You guys watch Glenn, Gary Glenn Ross, have you seen that movie? Okay.
What's your favorite Christmas movie?
What?
What's your favorite Christmas movie?
Oh, I don't know. Oh, It's a Wonderful Life. Yeah. That's the one. Oh, that's the thing.
Die Hard or Gremlins?
I haven't seen those. I'm out of it, man, I stop wa, I don't watch TV. I don't do anything, I just do this. I'm wondering about that guy, if he's, um. On certain levels, he's off his side, doesn't know stuff, at all. And when, when they, when they, when they wouldn't let him have his zoning things, right? Cause one of these dudes, we have, um, Kushman, Kushman and Wakefield, and you have the other one, Landquest, the Landquest guy. Was gonna go to his car and cry afterwards. Like, and he was crushed, man, that, that young guy. You know, that's his clients. And they've been crushing him out. But he's doing garbage, these like zoning things, and you go look at the place, it's a disaster. Like that may or may not. I think Kushman, Wakefield, I think both of those actually, you know Kushman, Wakefield, you know where their corporate headquarters is, it's up in, um, Miami. I think that they're in on it, they're okay with it. They're on a high level. I don't know, man. Yeah. That is so funny, man. There's that guy. So you know Officer Bush? Are you, you're like the guy that hangs out with Officer Bush? You know Officer Bush?
You ever been to South Seas?
No.
Captiva?
No.
Great spot, well, this one's for her, you need that too?
Oh, yeah, you mean down here, South Seas, that's what you call it. Yeah, cause I came right after the hurricane, so everything, they're all being. Like, you're not supposed to go anywhere. And I kinda stayed there, so that's what, what it is, they're like all, like, being like a Nazi or something. And then, so you're not supposed to go anywhere, go in any park, do anything. And I got used to that, and I'm just starting to come out of that. So that's kinda funny, isn't it?
What's that?
Like, how, how I got acclimated, like, in this place. Like, on lockdown. Like, on police state lockdown, it's like I. Like, I think of that. All scary stuff. They like stealing everything. They steal everything, like, they steal everything, the, the, the sheriff's department. It'd be like, so you gotta.
Just the sheriff's, does Cape Coral system do?
Well, I just call it, yeah, they go along, and there's factions. But, um, look at those police I did yesterday, Cape, Cape Coral Police. And it's, they're like scared, you know, and since they're not, they don't do anything, they're, they're, they're there. And if you ever, you just say there's a police action or anything, they're there, but they're not running in, it's all sheriff. You gotta like undercover, you can't even undercover sheriff, they're like walking all, you know?
You know they're getting cameras out, right, sheriff?
Yeah. They have, they have undercover, they have undercover, undercover everywhere. Look at my videos, I bust open all the other.
Couple hundred.
Right?
They have a lot of undercover officers.
It's everywhere, I do them, I do them all, I do them all. It's probably, you don't even know, like, um, look at my videos, and you'll start to see it.
I'm gonna watch that.
It's like, I, I got this other problem, I think everyone's undercover, cause it usually is, you know? All of them are scum, all that, and just, I don't know, but.
I don't know.
Cause they strip it out, so they're, they're, I don't know, two slices. Or, you know, people are with this thing, it's like all that weird stuff, all this guy. So what's up with you, man? How long you been working here?
How long have I been working here?
Yeah.
Um, you've been here, nine, ten years?
Oh, you have, okay. Hey, what about all the video, I can't, we get all the different camera angles? Can you give us the whole feed or something?
Um, we don't record on all cameras, just the, the main feed.
Oh, you guys decide which one to look at, right? Oh, and that reports. Okay. And, um, oh, okay. So what training did you get? What did you, like, your college or whatever?
I'm actually a vendor for the city, so they contract my company to, um, do the broadcast.
Yeah, okay, you ever do the news work? You ever work those news?
Not really.
Okay. Yeah. All right, see.
Don't feel that, huh? Don't feel that? Uh, no, I just. And you do, do you do fantasy football?
Yeah, I don't do sports.
Dude, you got any fantasy football, man?
That's so funny, man. Hmm. Is that guy?
She's good, she retired a couple of years ago. Didn't she? Quit working. Yeah. I'm retired in six.
Right. This guy.
Loving it? Yeah. Yeah, wait, wait, why is she still there? She's still up there? She's, she's ninety or hundred, she's a major.
Okay.
You need money already? Oh, yeah, I have the deal, yeah. If, if she gets that four times, she'll keep her, keep her, keep her, and she's just gonna pass. That's what my mom, yeah, she was in, she's a waitress, yeah. She said feeding, like, she did up until two years, she's sixty-six, when she found my dad. Don't worry, my dad's the worst, I just inspected her family. Is he okay? He's been there twenty-two years, he did instruct his whole life for that. Finally, one of the guys. I'm working down there. And then, and then, and then, and he loves it, and he, he's been with him my whole childhood, and he got in Boca Raton for two years, you know, driving back and forth every morning. Then he made P U S for four years, you know, driving back and forth, and, and, you know, God, he loves it, he hated it, but he tried to work it out. It's always a whole life, yeah. Who's your brother? Shahshin's up in North Carolina, he's a teacher in Robben. Okay. Been there since two thousand thirteen. Okay. He's doing, he went up there, discovered he married this summer. We all went up there in, uh.
Hey, these guys.
Yeah, yeah, it's very cool there. Yeah, and we're, so we're in North County, we're in South County. We have a big new, uh, villa, chalet, forty of us, my mom's in there. My mom's sister, and all her kids, they're kids. Those are the best, I've been there lately. Forty of us together, it's one big house, and now, you know, you know, my mom and her sister, they're your generation, and then you have all. Seven couples are, everyone, everyone, and then the honor of twenty of the third generation.
Yeah.
So you got a YouTube channel, or?
Yeah, oh, yeah, Los if Crumb, L O S. L O S. I have, see, are you in B, yeah, look it up, more rated down or something? Yeah, you gotta do it. See, I'm, so I was looking at you, cause you look like, um. Well, you know the other guys, you know, you have a nice, right? I don't know, sometimes there's, there's more than just, you know, they're, they're, they're really skiing. And they have some stuff like that up in Boston. And also the summer dudes, I can't swear, there's a bad guy. And I haven't seen him, he just sits over there and. He seemed kind of like that, and you go up to the same spot. I, I always. Remind me of the news guy. The news guy, you know, that, that house, like in Boston, you have their. You know, like, even a certain thing, you know, with their security carrier and stuff like that. And I think that even more, and then in the car, I looked at him, he's got the super cameras, they do surveillance, and I think they even. Of mass physics and all the day. I think they're, they would pretend to be the security guard, and all that, and then they're also, they don't know that they're really, the surveillance. Surveillance like that, I call it. Intelligence, um. Special. It's military. You know, for all the electronic stuff and video. So, so you look like that when you're. The other guy was up here. And you kind of flew in the same way as him, you know what I mean? But he doesn't work in the back, he, he would be over there. And they're setting up petty comments, too. I just got this. No, this guy, this guy just set petty comments, oh shit. Like, uh, like what do you think, man? So, um. You're just a guy, right? Did you? I know, man, cause they always steal my camera, this thing's a piece of junk, you even, you know, it's a hundred fifty dollars, man. Like, um, cause they, they used to grab my thing, but it's been, God, it's probably been two years now. Cause I don't wanna lose face, right? I'm not doing, like, method on my old Boston, so it's, it's me, stealing the camera, I don't wanna be like the gals. I don't wanna be like, I don't care. I've never been doing this camera, it's like I can't do anything. You look at, you got, you wanna give my, YouTube, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, LOS.
Oh, I don't know.
LOS, did you ever go to Chester Street? Chester Street? Yeah, LOS, yeah, Chester down south. LOS IF, and then space, Chrome, C R U N.
LOS IF?
Yeah.
Then what?
Chrome, C R U N, should do that. Yeah, look at, like I got, I got years, I did everything in Boston, I had. I put a long, long. I do like these intro clips. I don't figure out stuff.
Couple of years.
Just watching his face. You could figure out, you know, if you had the feed and. You're a recorder, you know, like you're, you're looking at one's expressions and stuff, you can read everyone's. Bill's Jane. I used to think he's, um. Robert Walsh is just a guy, but. He's just like, I used to think he's more, a little more devin, he is, or I thought they had something really bad for him, and then he's like, really. Like, so I get a little figured out, like. Jessica, they're all black. You watch the comments, right? It's like when they have those people coming in.
Oh, for a Republican?
Yeah, yeah. But if you just start watching. Yeah. You watch, you watch, you get it back. So, so why you? So dude, they told you, they told you to be nice to me, man, like.
God, nobody told me.
Yeah, they did, man. No, you can't, dude, don't lie, man. It's only you can hang out with me, I used to. Yeah, that's true. It's. Actually, the good, you know, the morning light, I did, you see, look at my, look at my videos, look at the music videos, I did Apocalypse Now with a morning light. And the light, first I was thinking of the good light, cause it's always washed now, in the afternoon, and it was cameras up as I took it, but in the morning, I guess. A certain side, you'll get that side light, like the Godfather of light. And then trees out there lit.
Use it.
It's beautiful, it's like, it is like Apocalypse Now. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so what, like, um, cameras and stuff. Hey, what's going on with that, my news reporter? You ever talk to her? Huh? What's going on with my news reporter? What do you think about the day when? You were here when? You were here when the guy got thrown out, right?
I, I wasn't.
Oh, in the morning?
In the morning?
Yeah, it's the morning, and then the weekly.
Recently.
Yeah, oh, so what's your name? Yeah. So what do you think of the mayor?
He does a good job.
See, dude, check this out. You, like, what do you think, that, so that guy right there, he was told to talk to me and hang out with me and be nice to me? Look how he is, though. Like, alright, alright, well, you will see on the video, but look how he acts. Don't you like to be a detective too? Don't you wanna be a detective? Look at him, man. They did, man. No, well, everything's Lee County. Everything's Lee County. This guy's Lee County, but in the bad way, man, you serious, Officer Bush? That's Officer Bush's boyfriend. Oh, my god. Actually, she's, actually, that'd be cool, dude, dude, you're probably, no, that's a compliment, actually. No, she, you know, that, that's actually, yeah. God, man.
I'm gonna go back in there.
Alright, absolutely. Oh, yeah. No, sorry, sorry about that, dude, Officer Bush, I just, I got, I got bothered, like. Got, got it, um, cause like, you know, the other dude just worked with me. The other dude, what's his name, Lucas?
Lucas?
Was working with me, yeah. And then, you know, so then at the end of it, I didn't know what they're talking about, cause they're talking about all the pizza stuff. Talking about all the prostitution, all that, you know, all this stuff, whatever they do, all their pole dancing, whatever it is, and. It's like. And at the end, I tell them. It reminds me of stuff in Boston, you know? The jungle. God, man.
Merry Christmas, and safe home, Dad.
Why is it dangerous? It ain't dangerous. It's not dangerous. That's like what, like it's made up. That's ridiculous. See, in Boston, we had. Do you see how they're not stressing anymore? Do you see how they're not stressing? They think it's safe now. The guy like quit stressing them, they quit stressing them. They're setting them up. Setting him up. Oh, look at him, man, see, he's so great, he's not stressing, he's. Yeah, see how I can see? And different thing, yeah. There you go, here. I know him before. God, this one. Thank you, I'm out there, but.